Councilmember Gillian?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Second.
Councilmember Gillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. At this time, I'll take city council public comments update, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one from the October 2nd, 2018 meeting. And that was from Ms. Cindy Nelson, and her concern was for the condition of the unfinished housing developments that's been started at Indiana and Somerset, specifically with weeds and debris at the location. Most of the concerns that Ms. Nelson had expressed were addressed at the council meeting, but just to review, we indicated to Ms. Nelson that we are going to be staying on top of the weeds and debris that's at the property, and we explained that the developer who is unrelated to the developer at the corner of Texaco and Somerset, a totally different developer, ran into some financial difficulties. He has since overcome that and will be starting on the project, we're hoping, very soon. So, again, that was expressed to Ms. Nelson at the council meeting. So with that, that's the only comment card that we had that needed some follow-up. You're welcome.
Public comments?
Yes, ma'am, we do have two. Our first one is from Ms. Andrea Crowe, our librarian. She wants to talk about the library programs. Ms. Crowe?
Mayor Martinez, council members in the City of Paramount. Paramount Library has a number of fun events coming up. Make Mo is coming. Thursday, October 18th at 4:00 p.m., children ages five to 12 can build and design with big blue blocks. They're huge fun. On Friday, October 14th at 10:15, children ages two to five can learn school readiness skills at Smarty Pants Storytime. And on Saturday, October 20th, we have a Halloween magic show for the whole family that starts at 2:00 p.m. We invite everyone to come to Paramount Library and have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
We have one more speaker's card, Madam Mayor, and that's from Ms. Helena Julian, and she wants to discuss with the council affordable housing. Ms. Julian?
I'm a member of the Paramount Women's Club. I'm the health chairperson. I'm a retired teacher. I'm very concerned because John McNulty is a 30-year resident of Paramount. He's blind, he's a senior citizen, he's getting twice a year rent raised, and he can't afford that, and Paramount has no affordable housing. Research shows there's more hate crimes among people on the streets than all other hate crimes combined. Renters who are Paramount residents deserve the same protection as homeowners. I look at this, I see two homeowners articles and no representation at all for renters, and that's not fair. Conclusion, I sincerely hope Paramount City Council does its job and does the right thing for all its citizens instead of creating a civil war between the haves and the have-nots. As a teacher, I pledge allegiance to the land of liberty and justice for all, and I sincerely hope the Paramount City Council will live up to that pledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Helena.
And that's it, ma'am.
Consent calendar, please.
Make motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. At this time, I'm going to change the order of the agenda. I'd like to have an update on the environmental testing in the classroom by Paramount Unified School District at this time, so if you're present, please come forward.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll do a brief introduction. In response to the air quality issue, the Paramount Unified School District has been conducting testing in classrooms at specific schools. The condition of the air quality inside the classrooms is something that we've heard about from some community members throughout the time that we're dealing with the hex chrome issue. As a result, the district asked to come tonight to inform the city council about what they have done and what they plan to do. So with us tonight is Board Member Linda Garcia, who will make the presentation, and additionally Superintendent Ruth Perez and Assistant Superintendent Ruben Frutos are also in the audience. So with that, I'll turn it over to School Board Member Linda Garcia.
Good evening, thank you for having me here. Good evening, city council members, and greetings from my fellow Paramount School District Board members. Tonight, I thought, tonight I will be presenting information relating to indoor air quality testing conducted in the school district, as well as other pertinent information related to air quality and chromium VI. Our goal is to provide factual information and to clear some of the misconceptions that have been published in local media. Our district continues to strongly demand the best air quality for our students and staff to that end. The Paramount Unified School District continues to work in partnership with the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the County Public Health Department, and other environmental regulatory enforcement agencies, as well as the City of Paramount, to provide our district and the latest information regarding the concerns and findings relating to hexavalent chromium levels in the community. There have been some social media comments about the district not partnering with the regulatory agencies. Nothing could be further from the truth as we continue to work closely with the agencies that regulate and enforce air quality in our community. The SCA QMD, as the regulatory agency in charge of the air quality in the area and as the agency providing the most current testing and investigation information implemented, the placement of testing equipment in school district property, and rotated the testing equipment to various school sites while reviewing and releasing results of those tests in their website. This practice has been in place for years, and we will maintain the access to our schools for AQMD testing. As we have continued to follow the SCA QMD reports, it has become apparent that the levels of chromium VI have decreased in our community, and we are thankful for the continuing efforts of the regulatory agencies and the city to maintain and assure the best possible air quality in Paramount, as you can see on our graph up there. As a slide indicates, the South Coast Air Quality Management District published the summary of efforts in Paramount reports, which shows that their enforcement efforts have been, have had a positive effect in our community air quality over a period from November of 2016 to November 2017. Part of that effort has been the placement and review of testing equipment in our schools. Additionally, the district has embarked in a year-long indoor testing process to assure the best indoor air quality in our classrooms. Three waves of indoor air testing have been completed, with the latest round of testing done in partnership with the LA County Department of Public Health. The next video has segments of testing process, as well as a brief interview explaining the joint testing and testing methods. The county health department team composed of consultants and county staff in blue, as you'll see in the video that's going to show, working with the district team consultants in green, explaining the close working relationships, the agreed-upon methods, and the expected results. We also see the locations where testing is done, and the county and district group jointly documenting the work on all the testing processes. Additionally, they clarify some misconceptions in social media about the LACDPH being just guests as opposed to partners in the process, and about the district not letting them do their own samples. They explain that the joint testing process, their choice to use a unified set of samples and labs, and most important, they explain that the testing so far has given good results. They call them negative results, which they explain means that there are no significant amounts found.
And then I'll check in. You're not going to need this one.
We appreciate the health department staff also mentioning that it has conserved to corroborate the good results received by the district in the first two waves of testing. If you'll see, they're measuring. They're testing the tables there.
I'm going to ask the three of you to tell us who you are, and on behalf of Paramount Unified School District, we want to thank you for doing the testing together today, the joint testing between LA County Department of Public Health and Paramount Unified School District for chromium and a variety of metals, et cetera, et cetera. So, Danielle, I'm going to start with you. You can tell us who you are?
I'm Daniel Ginsburg. I'm with Executive Environmental. I'm a certified industrial hygienist and have a master of science in industrial hygiene.
Hello?
Yes, my name is Raoul Sobero. I'm with the LA County Department of Public Health, Toxicology and Environmental Assessment Branch, and I have a doctorate in public health, as well as a master's in public health.
My name is Meredith Church. I'm with Leighton Consulting. I'm the project manager for public health for this project, and I'm a project geologist. We also have health science associates with a certified industrial hygienist that are overseeing the project as well.
Basically, just one question. The district did a couple of tests before by themselves, and now we are doing a joint testing. Originally, it was supposed to be two samples going to separate labs, but as you, the experts, met, you agreed in one set of samples, worked together with one lab, so I'm going to start with Meredith. Could you explain how that is beneficial, how it works, and then if the others want to say a little something about it, that's helpful for our team?
Absolutely. As an original plan, we had proposed to take two separate sets of samples, and the primary reason for that was so that there would be immediate disclosure of results to public health. We weren't certain we would get the results at the same time from the labs from the district, so in order to prevent that, maybe a couple-week delay in getting the results, we were going to take our own set just to make sure. The plan actually had not been to send them all to separate labs. The labs at Executive Environmental are using our labs that we also have used for the project, labs that Leighton is familiar with, that public health is familiar with, good labs, and for other specific reasons, it's beneficial to use the same labs versus separate ones for several different reasons. So, we had not planned to send them to separate labs. So those weren't true split samples, they would be replicate samples at each location that we were going to be doing. Well, when we had our meeting last week with the district and Executive Environmental, we felt very comfortable there was going to be complete, full disclosure and cooperation on the project. All of the information would be put on the chain of custody. Public health and Leighton will get the results at the exact same time as the district and Executive Environmental. So because of that, there really was not any benefit of taking an extra full set of replicate samples at each location. That is not standard per scientific protocol and similar types of studies of these at other sensitive locations. It is standard to take 10% replicates, specifically of air samples, so we are doing that. We're actually going a little bit above that, where we are taking that replicate sample at Lincoln and at Wesley Gate. So we will have one, which is a standard protocol, but we did not feel it was necessary to take a full set, and this is a fully cooperative effort, and we feel like the objectives of the study are fully satisfied with the one set plus the replicate of the air sample.
No, I concur with Meredith, and also to mention that this is kind of like a reconfirmation of the negative results we had last year, so this will kind of tell us in a different season, kind of reconfirm that and reassure us that everything is fine, so.
Wanted to mention that.
And I concur with both Raoul and Meredith, and by the negative results that Raoul mentioned, it's not negative and that they're bad, it's just that the material was not found.
We thank you for your time, and I know the testing will continue today and tomorrow, and after that, we'll publish the results when they come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the air quality testing information. So what have been the results from the first two waves of testing? Hexavalent chromium, chromium VI, CR VI, testing at various district sites on August 2017? The results of the study indicated the following: no airborne hexavalent chromium was detected inside any of the classrooms during the days of sampling. The report states, based on the data collected to date, observations and measurements in terms of potential exposure to CR VI, the classrooms are safe to occupy and for continuous use with the air handler in operation during all periods of occupancy. We invite you to visit our air quality website at PUSD Environment. We have received a variety of comments, including the questions of why use OSHA levels to compare our results. According to our testers, the results inside the classrooms were below the limit of detection and below the standards of the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessments, which regulates the levels of the state of California. This means that in some cases, we did not even have detectable results. We also received comments to further increase our filter levels from the current MERV-10, which are highlighted than the typical MERV-6 used in other districts, to a MERV-16, which is hospital-level filtering. We are reviewing this option based on how our classrooms are used and whether the additional filter levels increase will provide additional air quality benefits. As we wait to receive the results and to report on the third wave of indoor air quality testing, we will also continue to collaborate with the regulatory agencies, elected officials, our parents, staff, and students, and to operate in a transparent, responsible, and open manner to provide the most recent and relevant information possible. We agree with our partners that this is an ongoing process, and also appreciate the combined efforts of all the agencies that have worked in the collaborative manner to secure the best possible air quality for our community. We thank you for your time and attention, and encourage you to visit our environmental website for the latest information on air quality in the school district. Thank you for having us.
Are there any questions for Board Member Garcia?
I have a couple of questions. Hello. Couple of questions for you. You said that you've been testing for years, and so can you tell me what kind of testing prior to 2017 was conducted in the classrooms?
Ms. Gillian, I don't have an answer for you for that, but I appreciate your questions. I'll have staff get back to you before your next meeting, or to Mr. Moreno, so that you'll have an answer before your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then, an additional question is, the community and myself have been very concerned about chromium VI in the city, specifically at this point, Anaplex. Are you aware that there have been spikes, and the Anaplex, which is on Garfield and Jefferson, has been shut down?
Yeah, I am aware it's been shut down.
As recent as two weeks ago?
Yes.
So do you have concerns that there are?
Of course we do.
Okay.
We have concerns, but we are aware of that, and as far as I understand, you know, as long as they pay their, we, they're being checked, so, you know, I don't know why they get to reopen, I have no idea on that, but like I said, I'll get back to you with your questions.
Do you know if the Paramount Unified School District has sent any letters of concern to Anaplex, stating that we're concerned for the children who are upwind, like for instance at Lincoln School and those other schools that are so close to that location?
At this time, I don't know that we have sent any letters out, but we can get back to you, Ms. Gillian.
Thank you. And then, just another question real quick. You said the classrooms were being tested for chromium VI, and you showed an example of tables being wiped down, and just so that I'm clear, so that when I get questions from the community, were the tables wiped down prior to the testing?
No, they were not, and it was a two-day testing.
Okay, and how often are the tables wiped down? In usual teacher, teachers probably have a, you know, a classroom routine.
Right. I understand what you mean, as far as like when the janitors come in and they wipe everything down.
What is the cleaning process?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, and then also, in addition to chromium VI, are you aware of any other testing that they, any multi-metal monitors where they test for other things other than chromium VI? Because the industry puts out chromium VI, but there are also other metal that is dangerous to the students. Do you know if there's been any other testing in regards to other types of metal?
No, I don't.
Is there somebody that can get back to me on that, maybe, after they?
I'll have somebody get back to you, or to Mr. Moreno, before your next meeting, so that you'll have the answers to those.
Okay, and just two more questions. You mentioned that there's MERV-10 filters.
Yes.
When are those initiated? When are those put into effect?
Well, we have, we did put some filters, air filters that were given to us through Edison in the air conditioners. We are sampling the ones that are done through the hospital, but I believe as far as weight, what people are asking us to do, they cannot be put up onto the roofs.
Okay, because my concern with the air conditioners, now that we're entering into fall and winter.
Right.
If the air conditioners don't come on, is there some type of filtration system that's in place?
You know, I believe the air conditioners go on throughout the year.
They do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to see if that's...
Could I, Mr. Frutos, were you able to answer some of those questions? I saw you were going to get up. Yeah, if you can, if you can help out, that would be great. Please come forward. Yeah, thank you.
By memory, I might ask Ms. Gillian to repeat some of the questions. Let me start with the MERV-10.
Okay.
Our air conditioners are also heaters, so they do go out throughout the year, and if you recall, one of the things that we have mentioned is that the district went up to MERV-10 for MERV-6 about six years ago, when there was a nickel issue in the community. You may recall that that's when we started testing, which answers your second question. We've been testing for about six years when the AQMD put the first testing devices on top of the district office. So that's when they started looking at this. The reason why we went to MERV-10 is that the district, like many districts, see what they use, and mostly they use MERV-6. We went to MERV-10 when the nickel issue started several years ago, and at the time, what was said is that if we went any higher, which is hospital-grade or clean-room grade, you really don't benefit too much, because we are opening the doors throughout the day. So there's an enormous amount of outside air that comes in, plus our air handlers bring in about 30% outside air throughout the year. So those were MERV, number of testing, testings that we've done. We are not only testing for chromium, but there's also Title 22 metals, which I believe are 14 other metals that are being tested, and the results will be provided as part of the joint testing that we're doing with the health department.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to know, so that I could answer. But back to those MERV-10 filters, and you said they're also in the air conditioning and the heating system. So the MERV-10 filters are to filter out any of the particles or elements, so are those being?
Not any, actually. They're designed to do a certain level of particulate, but since outside air is coming in throughout the day, we've been very clear with our staff that it doesn't really filter 100% of the air unless you have a sealed room, and that's not the way school districts operate. So in a way, we've had a few people that come and recommend MERV-16s, and we are looking at that, but we really cannot find the way that the MERV-16 would work with the way we operate classrooms. So there are a couple of districts that are testing them, we're going to go visit them, and then we're going to report back to the folks that have been recommending. The problem is, the folks that have been recommending haven't provided any research of the utility of those filters.
Okay, so my question is then, just so that I have the answers, how often do the filters, the air conditioner or heater, are they set on a timer to go on every single day, either air or heat?
Actually, they are set by the user most of the time, but we have a central control system that does provide a temperature check of about 70-some degrees, so yeah, they do come in pretty much throughout the year, but ever since we started with energy management, only during occupied hours. We do have occupancy systems that check.
Okay.
So it is year-round, and just in case, the filters get changed every two months.
Okay, so it's manually operated by the teacher?
They can override, of course, but it's centrally operated.
Right, I know that it's possible that they can be. My question is, though, are they going on on an automatic basis? I think your answer is no, right?
My answer was yes.
So automatically, they're going on and off throughout the day?
Throughout the year.
Okay, great. And then also, what did I have here? My concern is because Paramount is unique with what we know so far with chromium VI, that our school district is facing things that other school districts that we know are not. There might be a few, like in Compton and other cities, but other than the MERV-16, has there been any innovative research as to what we can do to make sure that our students are safe? Is there anything else that anyone has looked into?
Well, actually, according to the AQMD, there are several districts that are facing the same issue, not just Compton, but Long Beach has similar situation because of the port, and any district where there's metal work, or even freeways, because the breaks produce a certain level of those metals, it is actually a common occurrence to have elevated level of metals in districts that are like ours. What we have done, we've asked the AQMD to provide us information, thus the improvement to MERV-10s, but I think your question is, have we done research on additional filtering?
Yes.
And we've asked the AQMD to provide us information to see if there's an additional filtering system that still works within our DSA requirements for weight of facilities and all that, and so far, we have not received that there's additional equipment that we could retrofit that's permissible for us that can work.
Okay, great. And it's true that there are other cities dealing with, you know, due to the ports and other pollution, but I do want to recognize, and I think you'll agree, that Paramount is unique in the fact that we were living in 350 times, which AQMD themselves say they had never seen anywhere else, and I think that's important to recognize, because that's where the concern came in with the community. Of course, we live in this part of town, and we have a lot of the same pollution problems as everybody else, but everybody else has never been detected at 350 times, a known carcinogen. So that's why the concern and the alarm comes into play, especially when it has to do with students. I just want to clarify why my concerns were for that.
Just so you know, the AQMD has actually identified other districts, that's why we're going to go visit Culver City. They are actually identifying districts that have high pollutants, and in the case of Culver City, for example, they have one elementary that's right next to the freeways, and apparently their pollution levels are higher. So the good thing about working with the AQMD is that they are identifying districts that have a need for filtration, they are the ones that do the research, and thankfully, Paramount has not been identified, but we are doing the research with those that have, so that we can learn from them and put the right kind of filters in our facilities.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll limit my questions to those, and I just want to say thanks for now speaking up and acknowledging the concerns that the community has. I think that was a big part of the gap, that it just seemed like nobody was really wanting to acknowledge. Whether that's true or not, I'm sure you guys did care, and I'm sure you did acknowledge. I think the gap of communication comes in when somebody feels like nobody's caring, that's where we have the breakdown. But the fact that now you're able to answer some questions, working in conjunction with the AQMD, the testing, that's all reassurance for the community, and thank you for that.
I would just...
Other questions?
Oh, I don't have a question, I'd just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank you two for coming and doing the presentation. I know that all of this information's been available on your website. I've read every time the reports come out to try to stay on top of it. I hope more people will visit it, because it's multifaceted, and a lot more information than you could give us here in a day, but it doesn't hurt to reach out in other medians, and this is one more way that you can share the information with the community, so I appreciate you taking the time to come and do that.
Thank you. We are doing some more testing being, it should be out soon, and it'll be on our website. So go on to the website and check it out, there's a lot of good information on there, and not just that, but everything that's happening in the schools. Right.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia and Mr. Frutos.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going, I'd like an oral report on the classification and compensation study update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, for almost a year now, you know, we've been working on something called a classification compensation study. Well, this type of study has never, ever been done in Paramount, is very common among many other city governments and county governments, school districts across the board. Because it's new to Paramount, however, it's taken us almost a year to complete. The study takes a really in-depth look at all of the job duties of each city employee and determines if that employee's classified in the right position with a correct job title. The study will then take this information and compare it with the compensation we pay to the compensation being offered for each position at similar cities. So for tonight, our plan is to... So for tonight, our plan is to present the data to you for your review, kind of as an update, and then not take any action at this point. We'll then go back and huddle, regroup with our consultant and the staff from our finance department, develop a plan to remain competitive in retaining and attracting quality employees in the most careful and financially conservative manner. So there are some changes that we could possibly make immediately, some that we could make at the mid-year budget time, which is in February 2019, and/or at the next budget adoption, which is in June of 2019. In any case, we see this as the first step in a multi-phase, multi-year approach to protecting the city's most valuable asset, which is our employees. So here's our consultant, Ms. Jennifer Ramos of CPS HR Consulting, who will present you with the findings from the compensation study. Turn it over to Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez and distinguished members of council. My name is Jennifer Ramos, and I am the Division Manager of Classification and Compensation at CPS HR. And I do wanna clarify that I will be discussing the compensation results alone. The classification study is running parallel with the compensation study, but today's results are the numbers. We'll be going over the numbers. The agenda, I would like for you to know a little bit more about CPS HR, so I'll be discussing that, as well as the scope of the study, what classifications were included, the methodology that my team used, citywide results, and then breaking down those results by each employee group that was covered in the report. I will at the end discuss some implementation considerations that leadership should look at as you look to move forward with the results. And throughout the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we will reserve some time at the end as well. So a little bit more about CPS HR, our history, mission, and our board. We've been in operation for over 31 years. We are a joint power authority. We do not rely on public funds whatsoever. We're self-sustaining. However, we do have a niche market, and we only work with government entities. We work with all levels of government, from state, we have federal contracts, local, cities and counties, special districts, nonprofits. Last year in September of 2017, we acquired Ewing Consulting, which is, they have expertise in the education market. So again, doing classification and compensation work and all HR functions at all levels of government. Our board consists of eight members all throughout the United States. We have members in Florida, Texas, Las Vegas, and throughout California. Our headquarters is in Sacramento. We are breaking out into the Texas market, Colorado market. So again, we have a national thumbprint. The classifications that we studied, or position titles, fall in three categories. The first category is the management classification group, listed here. We also looked at full-time employees, and we also looked at a list of part-time classifications. And what a classification is, is just all positions that exist under that title. So there could be multiple positions within a classification. The two elements that we collected as part of this study would be base salary. So we looked at the titles, then we looked, we collect the data that represents the minimum and the maximum of the salary range. But beyond that, to look for total compensation, we look at all benefits that the city pays for on behalf of the employee. That includes retirement contributions. For the management group, for example, allowances, car allowances, phone allowances are pretty common. Standard across all employee groups would be the medical, dental, vision. So we're really looking to arrive at a number that represents what you pay in full for that employee to perform the work within your city. And that's, we also looked at alternate work schedules, 980, 410, and so forth. The way that we arrived at the labor market is by looking at these factors. Agency size, we try to make sure that we look at cities that are the same size. A city of 400 employees is different than a city of 2,000 employees. You likely offer different services and have different number of department heads. So the size is important for that reason. Geographic proximity, we wanna know who are you competing with? Which neighboring agencies, whether it's a transit district, a county, another city, who is competing for your talent in your organization? We look for that as well. We look for industry standards or services. I've worked with cities in the past that have water and power, as an example, in-house. We would look to other labor market agencies that also provide those services. Competing agencies I addressed briefly, cost of living and cost of wages. So cost of living, what it costs the employee to live in your city, as well as the cost to the employer to pay that employee wage, again, total compensation in that geographic area. Transparency or availability of data. As consultants who work across the nation, we find that in California, that data is more readily available. We can go to websites and pull salary schedules, job descriptions, org charts. In many cases, we have to follow up with the labor market agencies and say, is this effective date accurate? Is this salary schedule that you have online the most current? Has your MOU changed? Has there been any cost of living adjustments? We have to follow up with the agencies to validate the data. But transparency in California is a little bit easier. When we get to Colorado, Arizona, or outside states, it's a little more difficult. So that's another factor that weighs into our decision. And then just participation from the agency. A lot of times, in this case, we have 12 labor market agencies that are, that were identified. Some may not have had the staffing to participate. We rely, when we're validating the data, if it's not readily transparent, again, following up with those agencies. We also look at labor market variances. I touched just briefly on cost of living and cost of wages. Your labor market of 12 is listed here, and you'll see that most of them are neighboring cities. That first column, the first one is city of Paramount, 100%. All of the other percentages are measured in relation to the city of Paramount. So if it's a number lower than 100%, then it means the cost of living in that city is projected as lower. If the number is higher, then the cost is higher for either wage or living. And we pull this data from an economic research institute, which does a geographic assessor. So it's a mixture of public and private sector data, and it has thousands of data points. And that's what we use to identify these numbers. Our methodology is whole job analysis. So CPS HR matches on all of the, beyond the job title. So I like to use HR as an example. We would not just go to another city and look for an HR manager title and rely on that solely. We would look for the duties that are being performed. What's the scope of work? What's the scope of authority? How many direct reports does that person have? We would want a full picture of the work that's being performed. We also reference not only the job description, but organization charts. We also look at position control documents. I've done plenty of studies where a title or a classification is listed, a senior level, principal level, or an assistant director, but that position hasn't been filled in two, three, five or plus, five-plus years. Well, we wouldn't match to that because the city operationally is not utilizing that position. So those are the factors that we weigh, that weigh into our decisions. So again, the operational use. If we, as part of the study, we did have identified 12 cases where there were not sufficient matches. In those cases, it's because of the reasons on the right-hand side. Maybe the delivery of services were different, the span of control, the organizational structure was not a good match, or the services were not provided at the city. In some cases, services are contracted out. So those are some factors that play in. I do wanna point out that although the data sheets in front of you include the market mean, which is the average, and the median, CPS, our recommendations are based on the market median. We believe that the median is more sound because high payers and low payers will be balanced out. And with the average, we find that data is often skewed. So we rely on the market median to make our recommendations. You will also see that in relation to the market median, we use the city's maximum salary, and we identify the percentage above or below the market median. The results also are effective as of July 1st, 2018. The reason that's a relevant date is because in some cases, we'll have either employees or department heads challenge the data that's reflected in the report as inaccurate. Well, I just went to this website, and the salary's different. But what we say is, was the salary reflected as of July 1st? In some cases, October 1st, in an MOU or a contract, salaries can go up, or cost of living may have adjusted it. So the report that we've provided to the city is effective July 1st. We also normalize part-time wages. We took the hourly amount, multiplied it by 20, 2,080 hours, and then divided it by 12 to arrive at the monthly, the monthly amount paid to the employee. And that was just to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. And where there were insufficient matches, we at CPS believe that there has to be a minimum of three data points to provide a sound recommendation. In a few cases, there were only two data points, so we deem those as insufficient matches. So now delving into the numbers, what everybody's probably been waiting for, the citywide results. This first slide is for base salary only, so not the total comp. For base salary, you'll see that each group, the first bar, that one on top, the green one, is a mean. Again, the market median, the red bar, is what CPS would like to draw your attention to. So for part-time, the city is trending 9.18% behind the labor market for base salary. For management, 7.62%. Full-time, 9.15%. And citywide results, negative 8.71, so lagging behind in the market by close to 9%. Now, this is for base salary only. When we factor in all the other variables and benefits and cash add-ons and specialty pay, the city is actually faring very well. It's for citywide results, again, using the market median, negative 1.43%. So you're lagging less than 2% in the labor market. Now, I do wanna point out that this is just the average of all the positions that were surveyed. So you still have some positions in, or classifications in the city that are farther behind the market. Some are 20%, 25%. The results that we're reflecting up here is all of the survey classifications. I believe there were 74 included in the report. Just to walk you through the data sheets that you have in front of you, because there's a lot of numbers, so I wanna make sure you understand what each column represents. That first column, all the way to the left, is gonna be the title in your city that was surveyed by going out to the labor market. The second column is the number of matches that CPS HR deemed was sufficient, or with whole job analysis, a good match. Then the city's maximum. We, I do wanna point out that the salary ranges that were used include the effective date of July 7th, 2018. You had a 4% COLA that was included in those salaries. That's what we used to match, to compare. And then you have the percentage above or below the market median and the mean. Now, again, I wanna highlight that the median is the sound piece of data that we make our recommendations on. And these numbers at the bottom reflect the chart that I was, the high-level overview, the chart that I, a few slides ago, that I represented. The next few data sheets are for full-time employees. Again, same concept, the title, number of matches, the market median and mean. One thing I didn't mention in the last slide is there's a dark delineation, like a line through the middle of the page. The left side is base salary only, the right side is total compensation. So there were two pages for full-time, and then part-time is lagging in the market by 8.36%. Now, a very good question was asked during the employee sessions. Well, since part-time employees are not benefited, then they are lagging in the market. They're farther behind the other groups. And I said, that's a very good point. That's something that city leaderships should look at moving forward. Now, there were a... So insufficient matches, we did have 12 cases where there were only two matches. I did have a few of these individuals approach me after the employee sessions and say, "Well, I think there should be more than two matches in a labor market of 12 agencies." And I said, "If you find that information, feel free to email me. I'm happy to revisit that." But our team has identified these matches or lack of matches based on, again, the services may be contracted out, or the duties and responsibilities could be divvied up amongst multiple individuals at your labor market agencies. So where there's insufficient matches, you have to go to other considerations, such as internal equity and compaction, which I'll talk about next. For policy considerations, one thing that the city might wanna consider is a blanket increase across the board, two, less than 2% total compensation you're lagging in the market. The way that some cities choose to move forward is, well, we're gonna give everybody across the board a 2% bump to their base salary, and then the benefits will remain the same. That's one approach. Or you can take a targeted approach. I've worked with cities that were lagging 15, 20, 25% in the labor market. What they do is they say, okay, our public safety, we're losing a lot of our public safety guys to neighboring larger cities. So that's a pain point for us. We wanna stop that bleeding. We're gonna devote our funds there, and then take a targeted approach amongst your employee groups. Or maybe you take a phased approach. That would be the second bullet point. How much is it gonna cost the city day-one implementation versus if you increased everybody who's lagging in the market versus taking a phased approach? In that same example, where the city was 25% behind the labor market, we projected for them labor costs over a five-year period, and they were on a year-to-year basis gonna decide, this year, do we have enough money to implement? Yes, maybe next year, our financial climate will be completely different. We'll just, we'll review this on a case-by-case basis to try to get up to the labor market. So that's another option. Another thing to consider is movement within ranges versus a step plan. So salaried employees like management typically have salary ranges. If they're currently at the top of the range, and you increase their range by 15%, are they automatically gonna move to the top of the new range? That's a discussion that you'll have to have. Or do they have room for growth over time in their new, their altered salary range as a result of the study? Step plans tend to be a little bit easier in this regard because you can move somebody from step five to step five of the new plan. But again, it's hourly employees and management employees or exempt employees are usually handled differently, but two considerations to think about. And then whether or not you have a performance management program. It's great to increase salaries, but how do you plan to move employees through the ranges over time? Annually, are they getting their performance evaluations in a timely manner? Is there something written in your contracts that states how they move? Do they get 1%, 3%, 5% for good performance? Those are also discussions that you'll be, will be having with management moving forward. Also looking at internal equity and compaction. So you wanna make sure within a reporting relationship, if you have an HR analyst, one, two, and three, you set the salary for HR analyst one, the level two would have a 10% differential above the maximum of the lower level, and the level three would have a 10% above the level two. Now, supervisory classifications, we recommend a 15% differential, and then management and above would be 20 to 30%, depending on what your pay philosophy is. So that helps minimize compaction issues. Where you're having somebody reporting, or having a supervisor with direct reports and only having a very small differential, what is the incentive to perform those added duties? A greater sense of responsibility? So keeping all that in mind when you're building your salary structure moving forward. And then just being able to understand the methodology used in this study so that for future studies, you can carry out the work, maybe internally within the city, or you can invite us back if you'd like. And we recommend a three-to-five-year cycle to address pay issues because the market is dynamic, it's constantly evolving. So you wanna be able to stay up to trend with what your market's dictating. And with that, I wanna thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor, one question. At one point, you mentioned that in some classifications, they were 20 to 25% behind in that classification. In that particular instance, was that with or without the benefit package? I'd have to see that, does anybody have an extra set of data sheets?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, Councilmember Lemmons. In regarding the position that was 20 to 25%.
Was a single position?
It's, well, there are a couple positions that are lagging way behind, but that does include benefits.
It did, and already included, and it's still up to 25% behind?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you go back a slide, please? Who's handling the slide presentation? I'd like to see the policy consideration slide, please. You stated blanket increases throughout our employees, but you also stated that our part-time employees are negative 8.36. So you stated that we should give... So you stated that we should give them an additional pay increase because they do not get benefits. Is that correct?
So that's something to, to consider, that you might want to increase the hourly rates for part-time employees since they are not benefited.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and if I, if I may, Madam Mayor, the other challenge that we're faced with, with part-time is the minimum wage law, which continues to go up to where it reaches fifteen dollars per hour in two years, I believe, is, is, two more years, it, it will reach that, two or three. So with that, we have to really take a very holistic approach when it comes to part-time, factoring in the minimum wage law, the impending. So that's going to be a very big discussion and a strategy that we will be developing.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. My question is, are you available? Like, if I have a question after I look at all this data, that I can get in contact with you?
Sure, I have some business cards here.
And then just one question that, let me just ask you this. Was there anything in your analysis of this complete study that you did that was blurring in one direction or another? Anything significant that stood out?
No, other than the few anomalies, that the twenty percent or more behind the labor market with total comp, everything seemed, seemed sound.
Okay, and then when we talk about the medium for full-time employees, and you say that, I think it was just a, we were right, right about there. Are you taking full-time employees in all categories and lumping them together? Because my concern is, if you have some employees that are making a certain amount, let's say it's a lower amount, and then you lump them in a class with other employees who are full-time employees who are making a lot more, but then you're averaging them out to get an overall average. Is that how that works?
Yes.
See, so that's a concern to me because it's our employees that are part-time and our employees who are in the trenches, if you will, that it may not reflect the fact that they are making significantly less when you bulk them together with other full-time employees who are at par or above.
So that's just to get an aggregate picture of what's happening in your city, but that's why each, within the final report, there's a data sheet for each classification. And again, the policy implementation piece would be looking at those who are farther behind in the market and addressing those individually. That would be the recommendation.
Right, so I just don't want it to be a skewed picture where we're saying all full-time employees are right about where they need to be when in essence, they've all been lumped together, and you may have some that are significantly lower and some significantly higher, but they're balancing each other out in the end.
That's on the aggregate slide, yes.
Right, and then I wanted to ask you, when you were given this contract to do the comp study, what direction were you given?
Well, I cannot speak to that. I don't know if John wants to chime in. I, my colleague, Andy Bernard, kicked off this project. I've been involved as of Friday, and I'm the division manager, so I got up to speed on what the team has done up until this point.
Okay, so you're just the spokesperson for it all?
Yeah.
Okay. And so you're, are you aware of what the direction is, or that would be answered by somebody else?
Can you be more specific in what you're?
Yeah, when they came to your firm, what was the, what, what was the, what did they ask that you do?
So I mean, based on what I've heard today and based on what I've seen in the report, it's just simply, a study has never been performed in our city, so we want to understand where we're faring in comparison to the market. Okay, fair enough.
Very good. Okay, the policy considerations, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Will staff be?
Right, well, like I said, we'll go back, we'll huddle, regroup with our consultant, with our finance department, look at revenue projections, come back to the council with some numbers and some possible, yeah, recommendations. And again, it could happen immediately, it could happen at mid-year budget, it could happen at the fiscal year budget. And as I said earlier, it would be a multi-year, multi-phase-in approach. And that's what we explained to the employees this morning and this afternoon when, when we met with all of them and gave them this similar presentation today.
Okay, very good.
Diana, I have two follow-up questions, if you don't mind. One, just to piggyback on the question that Councilmember Gillen asked you. So was the understanding then that in the final report, there will be specifics per classification, but this is an aggregate, and then when you do the final report, the specifics are in that?
Yes, so this is a high-level overview, but if you see, there's a number of matches indicated. So there's an individual data sheet for each classification, and it'll show all of the titles that were matched at all the labor market agencies.
Okay, and then just to follow up with you, John, again, direction to this firm? Do you concur with what we were told by Ms. Ramos, that it was just, you know, tell us where we stand?
Sure, absolutely, that's what the direction was.
Did we have any other specifics?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. It was in the contract that we have with them. It had a scope of work, so we'll be happy to provide that to the council in Friday memo if you'd like, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, I'd like a staff report on the transit agreement with Long Beach Transit, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. At the September eighteenth City Council meeting, the City Council approved an item that would allow changes to our transit system. The Council further directed us to enter into an agreement with Long Beach Transit that would allow them to extend their existing bus lines in Paramount, provide college-bound transit cards for our college students, as well as implement a dial-lift service for the severely disabled of our community. So before you tonight is an agreement with LBT that formalizes these services. So it should be noted that we're still working on an agreement with our transit, other transit partner, who will be providing the taxi cab services to our seniors. So we hope to have that agreement wrapped up for you soon at an upcoming council meeting. So tonight, we're just dealing solely with the Long Beach Transit agreement. And here's David Johnson, our Community Services and Recreation Director, who will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So as John mentioned, what we, we got directions from the Council at your last study session to go ahead and enter into an agreement with Long Beach Transit. And from that presentation, those elements are represented in the contract that you have tonight. It did extend those, those additional routes further into the city. Those routes, in addition to the routes that they currently have, constitute about eighty-five percent of our current fixed route system. So these new routes or these new extensions will replace our existing city route, our fixed route system. In addition to what we currently do not have and Long Beach Transit will be providing will be a dial-lift service, and this will assist our most mobility impaired residents in town. And then the third part, the transit access pass cards, this will be replaced in our college-bound program, which is a fixed route college to bus system, which takes you only to Long Beach City College and Sereals College. The tap cards will allow students to go to any local college in the area that can be accessed by Long Beach Transit and Metro Alliance. We will get a hundred fifty cards per year. They'll have fifty dollars on them per month throughout the year. That amount rolls over each month if you don't use it. It'll have a maximum value of ninety thousand dollars that we'll be getting. And again, if we need to go over a hundred fifty cards, we can, again, buy more cards, but the hundred fifty is built into the contract. So as we make this transition from our fixed route system to the Long Beach system, these are some of the benefits that we'll get. With the Long Beach system, we get better, improved service hours. There's more hours in the day that they operate. There's more days in the week that they operate. The, the smaller or shorter headway times just simply means their bussers run more frequently than ours do. Our bus goes by eight stops, takes about an hour. Theirs will run during the weekday about thirty minutes, every thirty minutes, and on the weekdays, about every forty minutes. We get better buses. They're larger, they're bigger, they're cleaner, they use more clean energy fuels than our buses do. And then overall, this helps us eliminate what we have on our books is about a one point eight million dollar bus replacement liability with our current bus system that we own. Again, as mentioned with the dial-lift, we get improved accessibility for persons with disabilities. We get, with our tap cards, again, more accessibility to local colleges for our students. And then overall, we're anticipating about an operational savings of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then, so as part of this transition, we need to obviously let the community know what's going on. So we have scheduled with Long Beach Transit, they'll be assisting us. We'll be at the community center on November fifteenth and November seventeenth, so weekday and a weekend, to give folks an opportunity, and we'll walk them through this changeover, and we'll show them wherever part of town you live in, we'll show you a route to get to wherever your destination is in town. And then certainly, we'll show them there's ways, there's all kinds of opportunities to get out of town as well. And then on Friday, we're working with the council at the high school. They have a coffee corner, they meet with parents of students at the high school. We'll be meeting with the parents to explain the tap card system. And we're also working to schedule a time at the high school that we can meet directly with the students who will be graduating soon. So at the end of the day, what we're looking at is, in the contract, they'll be receiving forty percent of our Proposition A local return funds. Again, it's a fixed percentage, so if our prop allocation goes up or goes down, they get forty percent of it to operate this program. The term, now, there's a slight variation in your report. It showed that it ended June, I think thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. That wasn't a full five years, so they did correct that for us on the contract. So the contract does reflect, it's commencing February tenth and then ending February first, two thousand twenty-four. And the agreement can be extended after that five-year term by mutual agreement. And we are recommending that we approve and authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for David?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item five, authorization to purchase and install security equipment at city facilities. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. Earlier this summer, we held an active shooter training session for city employees. It's a very sobering, but very real topic that we unfortunately all need to prepare for in this day and age. In addition to the training, we also conducted a walkthrough of our three main facilities with members of the Sheriff's Department, as well as our security systems provider. And that was to determine what short-term security devices could be added to enhance security and safety for our employees. Those three main facilities are City Hall, City Yard, and the Community Center. We've taken those recommendations and received costs from them. And here's Adriana Figueroa, our Public Works Director, to tell you more about this. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. In July twenty eighteen, a security assessment was conducted at our facilities following the series of active shooter training exercises. It was completed by the city's security contractor, JMG Security Systems, in coordination with the LA County Sheriff's Department and staff from Public Safety and Public Works. The assessment determined that additional security enhancements were necessary in order to ensure the safety of our staff and residents visiting our facilities. These security enhancements are required at City Hall, the City Maintenance Yard, and the Paramount Park Community Center. The security enhancements would eliminate blind spots and allow for quicker response times from the Sheriff's Department. The proposal from JMG for these security enhancements totaled twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and include the equipment and installation services. Additionally, there would be a combined two hundred and forty-four dollar monthly fee for service warranties and monitoring services for all three facilities. These types of specialized services are considered professional services under the city's procurement policies, and as such, are not subject to a competitive bidding process. Since these costs were not anticipated during the preparation of the fiscal year nineteen budget, they were not included in the budget, budget document. However, given the safety aspect of these enhancements, staff felt it necessary to bring this to the City Council's attention prior to the mid-year budget process. The total cost for these security enhancements will be paid from the city's Equipment Replacement Fund, and if approved tonight, a mid-year budget adjustment will be made to reflect this purchase and installation cost. With that, it is recommended that the City Council authorize the purchase and installation of security equipment at city facilities and direct staff to make that adjustment during the mid-year budget process. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Adriana?
Yes. Is, is this equitable, or do you find this with other cities? Did other cities like Bellflower or Lakewood have the same type of services, and that's why it was identified that we were lacking?
I have seen it in other cities, yes, absolutely.
No, my question was Bellflower, Lakewood, and surrounding cities.
I would have to, I wasn't here when the consultant came in, and so I would have to ask that, and I can provide that to you during the weekly memo, if you like.
Okay.
Is this like enhanced cameras, recording equipment? Or, or, I mean, I don't recall reading anything in there, just what it is that we're purchasing for, whatever, twenty-nine thousand dollars?
It is a combination of things, and because of the nature of the security system, I'd be happy to explain that, but I wouldn't want to.
I didn't see anywhere where it said anything.
It's the nature of the security, yeah.
Okay.
And are there particulars that were identified that we needed, and they were identified by who?
By the consultant and the LA County Sheriff's Department.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution eighteen zero three zero. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. Each year, we make changes to the personnel resolution to reflect many revisions in, say, things like employment law, CalPERS rules, or just general industrial changes that occur in the public employee world. So what, most of what we're amending is cleanup language tonight, with the exception of a new benefit for employees that we hope to get approved. And that's to offer bereavement leave for employees who have lost a family member. This benefit is common in most agencies. So again, most of the changes are cleanup language, with the exception of that. And here's Kevin, our Assistant City Manager, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before you tonight is the city's personnel resolution. That's generally brought to you for approval every year. As you know, the personnel resolution outlines the city's policies related to our employees' duties, compensation, and terms of employment. This document is updated every year in order for our policies to remain compliant with new employment laws, CalPERS guidelines, as well as with industry standards. This year, most of the changes proposed in the, in the personnel resolution are minor in nature and include things like language clarifications and statements of existing policies and practices. Some of the more significant changes, however, include, as John mentioned, bereavement leave, executive leave, and the clarification and addition of causes for disciplinary actions. Bereavement leave is a new benefit, again, as John mentioned, and we wanted to provide this for our full-time employees. We believe that this will be helpful to have during times of personal need for our employees. It also helps the city to keep our benefit structure competitive with other cities that also provide this benefit. Under bereavement, the city would provide three days of leave upon the death of an immediate family member, as defined. For executive leave, while this is a new benefit in our personnel resolution document, this is a benefit that was established many years ago by memo but was never formally stated in the personnel resolution. So doing this now is an effort to house this specific leave with all other leave times provided by the city. This benefit will provide forty hours of leave time annually to the city manager, the Assistant City Manager, department directors, the city clerk, on a use-it-or-lose-it basis. And lastly, we've clarified and added language regarding causes for disciplinary action. And that's what you see here and what we are proposing to add and change. And they are poor work performance, acts of dishonesty, obscene or lewd conduct, aggressive, profane, or abusive language, fighting firearms and weapons, tardiness and abuse of leave time, and theft. Of course, these disciplinary items were recommended to us by our personnel attorney and are in addition to existing causes that we already have in the personnel resolution. I also want to bring to your attention that we intend to change this process for next year. Instead of a personnel resolution, we want to create a policy and procedures manual that would have more in-depth individual policies for all of the items that are currently within the personnel resolution and more. After we create the policy and procedures manual, we'll then bring that back to you for review. However, follow, moving forward from there, we'll just bring back separate policies that have financial implications for your approval, as most of the other policies are administrative in nature. So with that, staff asks your approval of this item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Kevin?
Yes. Kevin, by any chance, did you guys think about employees that are part-time for bereavement? I know you said three, four, but you know, if somebody loses a loved one, whether they're a full-time employee or a part-time employee, I think maybe one or two days for, you know, to be compensated for a part-time employee. It's tough whether you're a full-time employee or not.
Yeah, we, it was something that we thought of. However, we were looking at it from the standpoint of accrued leave time. So with... So with full-time employees, prior to this going into effect, if there was a death in the family, that full-time employee would have to use accrued leave time for that purpose. Our part-timers don't accrue leave time, aside from state mandated sick leave, so therefore, there was nothing to preserve, there wasn't any leave time to preserve in that respect. And, you know, when.
But now.
But with part-timers, when they do have a need to take leave, you know, it's generally granted to them.
Right, but in the, what you're proposing now is that these are bereavement days, don't come out of your accrued time.
Correct.
They're additional days, so.
They're not accrued, this is just a leave time that would be provided.
Correct, and so I'm just curious, based on my initial question, did you consider that same leave time for part-time employees?
Yes, so as I mentioned, it was a consideration, but that was the thinking that we had, that because part-timers do not accrue leave time, there was nothing to preserve.
Nothing to preserve, but I'm saying to put in as an addition into the plans that you're trying to do. I understand that that was in the past, it was accrued time.
Right.
But now the change is, it's not accrued time, it's an additional date, additional time of bereavement time, and I just think it should be considered for part-time employees as well. And then my other question, and then maybe you can answer that later, my other question is, when you talk about discipline, and for all those reasons, which I think is very good to have defined in the employee handout, or whatever you guys give them at the time that they become employees, when you're going to interview them in, say it's a theft, and now you need to talk to them about it, is there anything in the language that's going to give them, you have a day, you have two days, and now we're going to be asking you about these questions you're entitled to, bring somebody with you, because we're talking about things of character that could impact their future employment? So if it's something that could impact future employment, like they're being accused of theft, I think they should have been entitled to some type of representation, and the ability to prepare for any questions that might be asked of them, it's just a balancing, check and balance system.
Right, right. So typically, when we have a personnel issue like that, whether it be theft or something, some other disciplinary action, or cause for disciplinary action, and we initiate an investigation, you know, the employee is informed that, you know, we are conducting an investigation, that they might be interviewed, and once they're on notice for that, if they would like to bring a representative, that's always something that we allow.
Okay, but for due process reasons, I think it should be outlined in the guide, that way it's not variable, like maybe somebody goes, oh, I forgot to tell them this.
Right.
That if it's in writing, then this is a right that they know that they have.
Yes, right, and so that's one of the reasons, actually, why we're looking to go to a different process for next year with a policy book, policy and procedures manual, because for some of these policies, we wanted to take a more in-depth look at each one of these. So one of the things that we will be including in the new policy and procedures manual will be something outlining the SCELI process, also the appeals process, so that will be included to spell out, you know, what the city's process is.
So that's something that you are looking at into next year?
I mean, SCELI is something that we already use, I mean, for due process, for any, you know, significant personnel matter like that, I mean, that's just our general practice.
But is it outlined anywhere?
Correct.
Because if it's not in writing, then it doesn't, you know, when you go, and it needs to be documented, if it's not in writing, then it doesn't exist, I just think it needs to be put in paper.
Well, except that it is, you know, it is embedded in the law, so that's what we follow.
Madam Mayor, and also, if I may, Councilmember Gillen, on page 14, section E2, it does say that we do have, that the employee may request the assistance of another person of his choosing in preparing and presenting an appeal at any level. So at any level of discipline, it is outlined in the grievance procedure that they can bring somebody.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that with the new changes, that that's also updated.
Any other questions?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any comments from councilmembers?
Probably just to bring to light, in case anybody's listening out there, our director of Siaka, Sally Hazard, has given her notice, she'll be leaving in February, so we will be looking for someone to take her place, in case there are any applicants out there interested in running an animal care facility.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a question. We know that two weeks ago, on the same day that we received an award for the city's efforts, which I'm very proud to say that the city's efforts were recognized, Anaplex was shut down on that same day, and that's number seven after they've had a stipulated order. So my question is, what's the number that we're looking for, or what's in the future of, you know, the city? What can we say to somebody that says, how many times are they going to be shut down and allowed to reopen? What's the number we're looking for, or what have we done to meet with Anaplex? Do we have any resolution, or is this just going to be a continuing process?
Sure, that's a very good question. I did speak with AQMD officials last week about this and expressed the same concern that you just stated, Councilmember Gillen, about how many times, you know, does it take? The AQMD official that I spoke to said they are looking at other measures, so there was no specifics involved in that response. So they are concerned that it happened again. So I did meet as well with representatives of Anaplex, that just happened today, that was myself, the city attorney, and Assistant Director of Community Development, Jean Carver, and they gave us their viewpoint about how things are going, and how things are happening, and what they've done. So what I'd like to do is to see if, what, you know, I encourage them to make that more public about what they've done to address this hex chrome issue. And then also, they are planning to, AQMD is planning to host a community meeting in December that will go over the health risk assessment, that it's required by law that both Aerocraft and Anaplex, they must have that community meeting. So there'll be more information described about what's going on at both of those facilities during that community meeting as well, so.
Thank you, John.
Actually, a couple of things, yes. Last week, I attended the ribbon cutting, for people that do not know, at the adult school. They're beginning in conjunction with Compton College, a cosmetology program there, and I believe it's going to kick off right after the first of the year sometime, so that will be starting pretty soon. We're also at Mesa, a little bit late unfortunately, but there were a lot of kids involved in that, there always is, that's pretty cool. And then I do have another mosquito report, unfortunately, and this is in a report we get every month from the general manager and her report, and they're getting swamped with requests. And to get the whole impact of this, I'm going to have to read this paragraph, her first paragraph in her report was, last month, the district reported that staff responded to more than 1,400 service requests in the month of August. Normally, they get 400, 450. The impact of invasive 80s mosquitoes is evident since the month of September, they recorded another 1,585 requests for service. I know, I had a request from, actually, another council member had called because they were having a problem, and it'd been over a week, I believe, before they responded, and they're running at least a week to get out now, because they're having, you know, four times, three, four times the number of requests, and they just don't have the people. And unfortunately, they believe now, and the bite pressure of this mosquito species during the warm months of the year will be Southern California's new normal. And it's a big area, I think I've mentioned before, but I have the list of all the cities there involved, there's 30-some-odd of them here that we have to cover. Thus far, as of this, as of September, there were 19 human cases of West Nile virus in the jurisdiction, which is ours, and there are 26 total so far in the season, which is a little less than it had been in previous years, so West Nile virus doesn't seem to be quite as prevalent, but mosquitoes are very prevalent, and that's kind of this 80s, which is the, it's kind of a black little mosquito with some white stripes on it, Asian tiger mosquito, they call it. So the thing is, is watch out for any standing water, all it takes is a bottle cap full, and they'll breed in that and lay their eggs, and then you've got problems, so it's all over the place.
I want to just add, Vice Mayor Hanson, that I had them come inspect my property, and they thought a source would be, which I had thought I had emptied everything you could possibly empty, so people, watch out, is your recycling. They said even a tiny bit of soda left in the bottom of a can is enough for them to lay eggs. So I had mine all barreled up and fine, but they said, no, that's not good enough, we suggest you get rid of your recycling, because even a tiny ounce of soda, they can lay eggs in.
Pretty good.
I'd like to extend an invitation to the following events to our community. This Saturday, the Elks will be hosting their annual deep pit barbecue this Saturday at the Elks Lodge on Alondra, and also, this Sunday, Dia de los Muertos, hosted by the Topeka Sister City, will be held this Sunday at Paramount Park, and our Halloween carnival will be held at Paramount Park on October 31st. So I extended an invitation to all of our community members. At this time, I adjourned our meeting.